I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. We please join me as we honor America and Navy Junior ROTC Wildcat Company presents the colors and then I will lead you in the pledge to the flag.
Forward, march. Color guard, halt. Left, face. Eric, colors. Present, colors. Agent salute, players. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with its religion. Eric, colors. Order, colors. Color guard, halt.
And you may be seated. Before we get started this evening, I'd like for us to take just a moment and put in our thoughts and our prayers. A very valuable staff member that we lost this past week, Ms. Latoya Pack at Willowbrook Elementary School. And for those of you who have been in Willowbrook, and I did see this and quoted somewhere, she certainly was the face of Willowbrook Elementary School because she was the first person who smiled and outgoing personality greeted you. So let's take just a moment, keep her family and her children in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you very much. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. The agenda is approved unanimously. Next, we move on to special reports and presentations. First, some of the good news that's taken place in the Oak Ridge Schools. Heather, we'll start with you.
All right. It's my pleasure to present news from Willowbrook. The Willowbrook Elementary School Student Senate is refurbishing all of the buddy benches and reintroducing and reeducating students on their purpose during recess. These are great addition to the playground areas and encourage students to resolve conflict and make new friends and communicate with each other. Gabby Rivas, Nevea Height, and Macy Cassidy won the Regional TSIN Statewide Design Challenge for improving access to clean freshwater in our community. TSIN is the Tennessee STEM Innovative Network, and these student engineers will present their innovative ideas to a panel of TSIN judges representing Oak Ridge City Schools' elementary students. Willowbrook Elementary hosted their annual Super Hoops Faculty Basketball Game on March 31st. Twenty-two staff members played, and the entire staff and over four hundred and fifty students, parents, and families attended. The Willowbrook Cheer Team performed at halftime. Kindergarten teacher Melissa Williams and teaching assistant Natalie Johnson worked with the group of sixty K-4 cheerleaders for two months prior to their performance. Oak Ridge High School basketball players Bryson Comer and Kayden Breitharp were our referees and did a fantastic job. We would like to thank Principal Corrigan for allowing us to use Robertsville Middle School, and it raised almost $2,000 for the PTO. A wonderful time was had by all. That's great news.
Thank you. Erin?
Okay, good news from Robertsville Middle School. The Robertsville Middle School TSA, which is Technology Student Association, recently competed in the TSA State Competition in Chattanooga and finished with incredible results. RMS received first place in fourteen categories, second place in five categories, and placed third in three categories. Dr. Sandra Burnett and Ms. Bryson Leffwich are the club sponsors and we're extremely proud of these dedicated students and all their hard work. Congratulations to the RMS TSA for a job very well done.
Laura?
Okay, I've got good news from Jefferson Middle School. Former Jefferson Middle School student and current junior at Oak Ridge High School, Ben Bivins, recently reconstructed the track and field long jump pit at Jefferson for his Eagle Scout project. Thank you, Ben, and Boy Scout Troop 328 for all their hard work completing this project.
Angie?
From Oak Ridge High School, the Secret City Wildbots competed this past weekend in Houston in the World Championship. In the hopper division, they went undefeated, and Dr. Mark Buckner, their team coach, received the Woody Flowers Award. I think there have only been twenty-four of those awarded in the history. It is the highest honor afforded to any mentor. So that is definitely good news. Roxanne Farahi, a senior, placed first at the Southern Appalachian Science and Engineering Fair, earning a scholarship prize and the opportunity to travel to Dallas in May to compete at the International Science and Engineering Fair against eighteen-hundred other high school students from around the world. Farahi worked with Dr. Joanna McFarlane at the ORNL to automate the analysis of temporal pressure data as noble gases dissolve into molten salt. The result was the creation of software that helps researchers use a novel application of the kinetic model to determine the solubility of noble gas. The research was conducted as a part of the math-science thesis course at Oak Ridge High School, a partnership with ORNL that has existed since 1981. Farahi will attend the University of Tennessee Knoxville as a biomedical undergraduate student with plans to pursue a postgraduate medical degree in reconstructive plastic surgery. Joseph Blair and Nicholas Podar, both seniors, placed first and third respectively at the 58th Annual Tennessee Junior Science and Humanities Symposium held on March 9th and 10th, 2023. The students were awarded scholarships for their efforts and will travel to the National JSHS in Virginia to compete for additional military-sponsored scholarships next month. Additionally, Oak Ridge High School thesis advisors Deanna Pickle and Jessica Williams were presented with the annual JSHS Regional Teacher Award honoring contributions to advancing student participation in STEM research. Blair presented the research, and he and his partner, fellow Oak Ridge High School student August Morel, produced using a form of machine learning called Deep Feed Toward Neural Networks. The students worked with Dr. Rich Archibald at ORNL to identify exoplanets based on dips in the light of stars, revealing the exoplanet's Deep Feed Forward Neural Network improves through an increase in accuracy and faster computational time. Podar and research partner Hudson Reynolds worked with Dr. Deb Sinthu Blomick and Dr. Christopher Stanley at Oak Ridge National Lab to use machine learning to replace simulations of tumor growth and progression. Using the personalized tumor geometrics they created, the students created nearly instantaneous predictions of unique tumor simulations. All four students were able to conduct research at Oak Ridge National Lab as part of the math-science thesis course at Oak Ridge High School. That's very good news.
My good news comes from Woodland Elementary. Ms. Sarah Green, librarian at Woodland Elementary, has been recognized by the Tennessee Association of School Libraries as their Librarian of the Month. Ms. Green enjoys sharing her love of reading with all of her students and seeing them get excited about a new book or wanting to share their favorite book with her. She says that is the best part of her job. Art teacher Ms. Mary Catherine Chin has been awarded a $3,500 Oak Ridge Public Education, Oak Ridge Schools Public Education Grant for her project title, Woodland Elementary Annual Art Exhibition. Ms. Chin will be able to use this grant to purchase displays, hardware, and supplies to showcase woodland artwork for many years to come. And that's just some of the good news taking place in the Oak Ridge Schools. Next, we move to the recognition of the Oak Ridge Schools Volunteer of the Year. I would like to ask at this time Ms. Joe Bruce, Ms. Lauren Dean, and our vice chair, Ms. Laura McLean, to join Mr. Bill Walls at the podium. As you may know, this year, we did our process just a little bit differently. Each school had the opportunity to select and nominate one of their volunteers for this honor. And the board, after a lot of deliberation and careful consideration, selected Mr. Walls to represent all of the volunteers in the Oak Ridge Schools this year. His name will be submitted to the Tennessee School Board Association, and our hope is that he will be selected as the East District Volunteer of the Year. If selected for that position, he then will be placed in the category with eight other district winners across the state of Tennessee, and hopefully would be selected then as the Tennessee State Volunteer of the Year. We had a lot of great information about this particular volunteer, and I'm going to read something that jumped out to me, and then I'm going to turn it over to you all. Mr. Walls embraces the portrait of a graduate model and is teaching our students to be critical thinkers, good communicators, to work collaboratively, and the importance of the creative mind. He is a great example of a learner by showing that learning never ends, and we all have so much to share. He in turn is creating an environment of enthusiastic learners. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Bruce or Ms. Lauren Dean, whoever wants to jump in and go next.
Yes, we cannot thank you enough, Mr. Walls. He is just, do I need to get the podium?
Okay, can you hear me now? We just can't thank you enough for everything you've done for our students. He works with a first grade class in our Readers and Leaders Program, and the work that he has done, the work that you have done with those students is incredible. They are excited. Apparently, I'm a zookeeper, was that what it was? That was one of the things I was, and the kids were so excited about all these things that I was doing in my spare time, and they would just bombard me from the hallways, and they were so excited about what I was going to do next. And he, that, that love that you are instilling for learning, for reading, to be excited about the learning process, is something that can never be taken away from those children. So just thank you for inspiring those kids and for all you do for our students.
Well, Bill is absolutely amazing, what he does in that classroom with the children. He gives them all a little nickname, they're all proud of it. One is Captain, and she loves it. And she always tells me, "I'm in charge." But what he's doing is building this enthusiasm for learning, and he's just that great, you know? Readers and Leaders is just that. We're pulling community leaders into our building to help our children love reading. And what Bill does with that, by building that story around Ms. Lauren Dean, she's done all kinds of amazing things, by the way, and then he takes it, like she was a zookeeper, and then he reaches out to the Knoxville Zoo and they adopt us, our school. He tried to get Mayfield Dairy to come bring ice cream to us when she told him that she liked ice cream. So all of those things, and the children are just loving it, and sometimes they say, "Well, he has taught us to fib, but we know what that means. And we know we're not supposed to tell stories, but we can make up stories." So they've enjoyed that. And then, once she met her ultimate goal, which was to be the principal of the year at Willowbrook Elementary School, then we had to retire that story, and now he's building stories around those wonderful character words. The respect, responsibility, hard work, or all of those things that we incorporate in our everyday learning. He's doing that in the classroom with our students each week. And then it didn't, it didn't stop there, because he was visiting with me one day, and you know, I've always done our Christmas program in that building at Willowbrook, and we outgrew it because we needed that room for a classroom. And now we have this beautiful partnership with his church so that we can build there. And that didn't stop there. So now the church wants to see how else they can partner with us. So he is truly a leader for us in that school, and we are so grateful, so grateful to you and all of the work you do, and his beautiful wife, she's back there, doing the same thing for us.
On behalf of the Board of Education, and let's get your wife to come up and be in this picture with you as well. On behalf of the Board of Education, Bill, we thank you for what you do, and you represent volunteers across our district who make things happen in the Oak Ridge Schools that would not otherwise happen. So we are gratefully appreciative of that. Please join with me in helping thank and recognize Mr. Bill Walls as the Oak Ridge Schools Volunteer of the Year. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. The public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. Excuse me. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. Please raise your hand to be recognized if you choose to address the board. You will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time?
Good afternoon, School Board. We had been in correspondence. I'm Jared Ormsby. I'm from ASAP of Anderson. We are a drug prevention nonprofit here in Anderson County, and I have two students who recently attended a legislative trip to Washington DC with ASAP. Through our, our grant dollars, we're able to support this program called the Youth Ambassador Coalition, where we take students from both Oak Ridge High School, Anderson County High School, and Clinton High School to help us in our, in our public health efforts, and it gets them involved in, in, in the Anderson County community and gets them good experience for college and beyond. I don't want to bore you too much. They have the fun stuff to say, so I will pass it off to Luca, who, okay, I'm going to pass it off to Amelia, and then Luca, who are both students at Oak Ridge High School.
Hi, I'm Amelia Marcus Brock from Oak Ridge High School, and I'm not only on the Youth Ambassador Coalition, but I'm from the Secret City Wildbots Robotics Team as well, so that was super exciting. So today, I'm here to speak to you about our trip to DC. I was so fortunate to be able to travel to DC for my second year in a row now, in a row now with ASAP of Anderson, in their Youth Ambassador Coalition to advocate against substance misuse. I enjoyed speaking to Congressman Fleishman and Senators Hagerty and Blackburn last year about the dangers of vaping for people my age after seeing it in Oak Ridge High School and even within my friends, and I felt like I really made an impact on them, just as all of ASAP and Tennessee's coalitions have been hard at work doing. This year, on our trip to DC, we didn't have as long of an in-person meeting with Fleishman, but he literally ran out of the Capitol Building to talk to us during the recess of the House. And during that, Luca, another youth ambassador, did an amazing job speaking about the dangers of Delta Eight, which is a similar drug to Delta Nine or marijuana. During this trip, we also attended a Zoom call with one of Senator Blackburn's aides, where Luca, I, and my younger sister Cynthia shared about our legislative priorities. I advocated for non-opioid alternatives for acute pain management, which is pain that develops suddenly after an injury or surgery, not chronic pain. And the main point of my argument was that prescribing opioids for acute pain management can lead to a substance use disorder, because one in three people who use an opioid for more than thirty days will still be using that opioid a year later, according to the CDC. So instead of using opioids for acute pain management, other great alternatives are local anesthetics, physical therapy, and chiropractic therapy. But the issue is that they aren't covered by insurance, so they're therefore less encouraged. Another main point of my argument was that these alternatives promote primary prevention, the highest goal of ASAP and other drug prevention coalitions in Tennessee, which means that ASAP encourages everyone to be drug-free. To raise further awareness about substance misuse, my sister spoke about the rise of nitrines, which is a drug forty times stronger than fentanyl, and was involved in over seventy percent of the overdose deaths in the state of Tennessee in 2021. It is being discovered in overdoses in Tennessee, often mixed with other drugs, which is why it is so important for Tennessee's prevention coalitions to continue encouraging our communities to be completely drug-free. Lastly, aside from being able to raise our legislators' awareness, we were able to attend many impactful and effective trainings, with presentations from people who work for coalitions, our distinguished researchers, or even from the CDC and other government programs. The most impactful training sessions that I attended were one on the impact of fentanyl in the US, one about cultural and social inclusivity and prevention, and one about the development of an industrial mental health resource. Traveling to DC and speaking to my legislators empowers me to continue sharing my voice to prevent drug use in my school in Tennessee, and I am just really grateful to have a forum to do so through ASAP. Thank you all for listening.
We still good on time? All right.
My buzzer hadn't gone off yet, but I got so enthralled in listening, I forgot to start it, so. You're okay, but it's running now.
All right. Yeah, a lot of what Amelia said, it was an honor to be able to go to DC and speak with people like Congressman Fleishman and the senators, and yeah, I just kind of want to add on what you said. Not only did Congressman Fleishman run out to meet us, he ran in the rain, and it was like a, so that was, that was fun. But a lot of what we learned from DC, I think, is especially, so we talked, we talked a lot about like federal level regulation and federal ways to prevent drug abuse, and, but we also learned a lot about local, which I think is more apparent with Oak Ridge and especially as the school board. So it's definitely about awareness, and my topic was Delta Eight, which is currently, there's a loophole in the Farm Bill, which is like, because it's not technically Delta Nine. And so I think while people are still getting it sorted out on Capitol Hill, I think as a city, the best thing we can do is to make sure that people know, like, that if they ever, God forbid, get into this stuff, that they should know what it does to your body and the impact it can have on your life. And I think, I believe a statistic that I found was something like seventy-seven percent of all secondhand addictions to stuff like Delta Eight are for people under eighteen. So it's especially paramount, people like me and Amelia who go to high school. But definitely as a city, I believe the most impactful thing we can do is raise awareness for not just like students, but for, but for everyone. So I just wanted to say, and I mean, the stuff we've done so far is really incredible. I see like all over Oak Ridge High School, people, there are ways for people to know what, like, if they vape, there are ways for them to know what they're doing to their body and what impacts it can have. So I'm really grateful that you guys have done that, so thank you.
Thank you for the comments, and I might want to talk with you a little bit later to find out exactly what it takes to get a congressman to run.
I'll hook you up.
Towards you, yeah, towards you, not away from you. Thank you all very much, and thank you for your involvement in this and sharing this information with us today. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Seeing no one, anyone else?
My name is Anne Toth. I have four kids in this district. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend Bruce Boescher, Dr. Boescher's addressing the League of Women Voters, and he distribu, or he and Laura McLean, who's a board member, distributed the, really a breakdown of the issue facing this district in regards to buildings and growth. I found this particular flyer to be very effective in communicating the crisis that is facing this district, particularly on the West End in terms of student numbers and aging buildings. I would just like to encourage a conversation among stakeholders and getting stakeholders involved in this process like yesterday. I mean, we are already probably a couple of years late in acting on these things, particularly with the growth at the Preserve. But then my other concern is how are we assuring that we are retaining and offering retention to as many qualified district employees who are producing good outcomes in the classrooms? I just, has there been any discussion about mailing things like this off to all households in the community, all of your constituents, to inform them, or just create some sort of outrage, or not outrage, a productive conversation that really addresses the urgency of the buildings and the student-teacher ratios, and just what as a community we want to actually do about this in conjunction with City Hall, or City Council? And that's it.
No, thank you. Thank you for those comments, and I would just say, this is, what you speak to, particularly with the need for new buildings, improved buildings, increased enrollment, is not something that is on the back burner.
Right.
It's something actually we've been discussing since July.
Yes.
And it's- And it's, it will take a combined effort, not just from the Board of Education, but from City Council and the community as well to make this happen. I'm glad Ms. Smith is back there with the media, because this is a topic that, as, as we progress on, needs to be understood by the community as a whole. And to answer one of your questions, oops. Stop.
Stop.
Me and Techno. To answer one of your questions, yes, one of the things at a point in time we will be doing is sending out information to the community and to the stakeholders and to the parents of the students to make them aware of the situation, because moving forward, as I said, it will have to be a team effort to make this happen. And we have asked in the joint meeting that we have had with City Council already, Council to be looking for some land and to set aside some money to help buy that land, if, if that's what we have to do, or trade out some land, if that's a possibility, and to set aside some money in their budget for soft costs as well to help get this started. So I appreciate your comments, and I hope you will share your comments with others in the community as well. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll move on next to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Ms. Webb. Please cast your vote. Motion is approved. Next, we move to items for action. The first item is Oak Ridge High School Boys Basketball Trip to the Bahamas in November of 2023. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Oak Ridge High School Boys Basketball Trip to the Bahamas in November 2023.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
You see the attachment attached to this item, and we've done this for many, many years, I think all 10 years that I've been here in the district. And we have Coach Green back here, that's the, the expert, if there's any questions from the board.
Comments or questions from the board? Coach Green did say that there were a couple of extra seats on the plane, if anyone was You can just kind of shake your head, you don't need to come up, Coach. Going in 2023, this year, will include all current members of the basketball team with new additions? That's, that's a good thing. This will be, in my opinion, an experience of a lifetime for some of these kids, one, just to fly on the plane, and two, to travel outside of the United States to participate in an event like this, which teams come from everywhere, right? Okay. Please cast your vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Moving on to Item B is the Food Services Management Contract. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Food Services Management Contract.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
Lots of information in the memo from Ms. Van Dyke there. As it states, the district is required to go out to bid at a minimum every five years for our food service management contract. An RFT, RFP was compiled and advertised. We had a district evaluation committee put together, and you can see the summary and the recommendation there. We have that the proposed score summary and the apparent best evaluated proposal letter related to the RFP are attached. FY24 will be the first year of the contract, which is renewable for four additional one-year renewals, subject to the mutual agreement of the school district and SFE. And I know Ms. Van Dyke, we have Mr. Ellis here as well, if there's questions that the board may have of him.
And yeah, just to add to that, Mr. Fred Ellis, who is the Director of Regional Operations for SFE, is in the audience. If you'd just kind of stand up and wave so we can see who you are, and we appreciate you being here. Questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, the motion on the floor is approval of the Food Services Management Contract. Motion passes unanimously, and we look forward to working with you the coming contract season. Ms. McLean and I were talking earlier, as we get to this next item, we're going to approve, I think, three clubs for Oak Ridge High School. Based on clubs that we've approved over the years and other things that go on at Oak Ridge High School, I don't see how a student can't find something to be involved in at Oak Ridge High School. There are multiple, multiple opportunities, and if you can't find something, you're just not looking. So the first item of approval is the Oak Ridge High School Statistical Game Theory Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Oak Ridge High School Statistical Game Theory Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Dr. Hartman.
I'll just show a little bit of the, the purpose of the club, is to serve as a place for students interested in the statistics and probability behind games to come together. The club will allow students to study the outcomes of many of their favorite games and optimize their chances of winning.
So if I were, probably not, but just if I were going to Las Vegas, I'd want to attend a meeting of this club to see what my odds were before I went.
Yes, I can advise you on that, but maybe these folks could.
Or take them with me, as the case may be. Comments or questions from the board? Okay, sorry, Ms. Agle.
Game theory is very mathematics-intensive, so I would expect that some of the active members of this club may be the same ones that we were just hearing about in the good news from Oak Ridge High School. One of my daughters has a master's degree in math, and this was something that she studied a little bit of, and that, it is a fun way for the students to study a rather difficult subject.
Thank you. All right, please cast your vote. Motion is passed unanimously. Moving on to Item D is the Oak Ridge High School Trading Card Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Oak Ridge High School Trading Card Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
And the purpose of this club is to build a card gaming community within their school, and their activities will be free play, commander pods, watch tournaments, and deck building.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, Oak Ridge High School Multicultural Student, sorry, Student Union Club. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Oak Ridge High School Multicultural Student Union Club.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agle. Dr. Borchers.
The purpose of this club is to bring more culture and learn more about Black history, also while having important, sometimes uncomfortable conversations that need to be had to improve school culture.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, Item F is Board Policy 3.600 Insurance Management. This is a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 3.600 Insurance Management.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
As the board can see on their attachment, starting at the bottom of page two in the red lettering, we wanted, as an executive team, to honor and give a benefit to those support staff that have been here longer than 25 years. So as you can see here, they're going to get some of the same benefits our licensed staff would get as far as insurance costs. So if at age 60, they would like to retire early, if they've given 25 years of service, we're going to give them the same benefit that our licensed staff has.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the next item is the Approval of Board Policy 6.317 Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority. This is a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of Board Policy 6.317 Student Disciplinary Hearing Authority.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
This is an add-on recommendation from our attorney, Mr. Chris McCarty. After a recent DHA, he realized this was not in our policy, and it should be. So that's why you see that addition in red today.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Next, Item H, FY23 Summer School Fees. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Summer School Fees.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agle. Dr. Borchers.
Very simply, for, for our students, middle and high school, there will be no fee or
Comments or questions from the board? I don't know why mine didn't. Everybody voted? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the FY24 Carl Perkins Reserve Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY24 Perkins Reserve Grant, which will fund purchases of a banner printer for digital arts and an FAA-approved flight simulators for our aviation ground school.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
And as I just mentioned, about $25,000 is requested to purchase that banner printer for graphic arts, and then $25,000 will be used for the flight simulators for our new high school aviation program.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean.
I think the board needs to practice on those flight simulators. That seems like something fun for us.
You should do that. I've done it once and landed, and I'm not going to try again. So I'm going to be 100%.
Hearing no other questions, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Head Start Cola and Quality Improvement Funds. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Head Start Cola and Quality Improvement
Motion made by Dr. Hartman. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Ms. Agle. Dr. Borchers.
As we typically do when we give a staff increase, we also then help the preschool make that same percent increase in salary for the preschool, and this also includes roughly $10,000 to continue hiring a part-time floating teacher assistant.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. The next several items have to do with remodeling and construction that will, as we learned before the meeting, will begin tomorrow. Is that what Alan said on some of these? So that's good news, and we may have more questions about that. First one is the remodel of the Willowbrook Clinic Restrooms. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the remodeling of the Willowbrook Clinic Restrooms in the amount of $34,640 by Skilled Services LLC.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agles, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
And as the board can see, the project includes demolition of the existing services, recovering recently installed plumbing fixtures, improving ADA access, installing new and reused fixtures, and final finish work. And this is part of the, the final dollars we had out of the ELC grant that came during COVID.
Comments or questions? Alan, you just want to come up here and stay at the podium while we go over these next few items?
I need to pull up a chair.
But you're welcome to.
So my question would be, when the timeline for this project?
We'll actually cut them loose, and they'll start their work probably in the next month in the afternoons and evenings. Where these restrooms are going to be located, there is another set of restrooms adjacent to it would not be affected, and so they can start their demo work prior to school being out and then complete the work prior to the end of the fiscal year.
And no asbestos?
None that we have. That, that school had actually been cleared of asbestos in 88 when it was remodeled.
Motion is approval of the Willowbrook Clinic Restrooms. Please cast your vote. Motion is approved unanimously. Next item is the Remodel of the Oak Ridge High School Welding Classroom. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of a bid from Leon Williams Contractors LLC in the amount of $701,500 for the remodeling of the welding classroom in Oak Ridge High School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean.
And again, the, the board knows that this was part of that innovative grant that came from the state of Tennessee, so we're lucky to have these dollars and to kind of re-energize the welding room. And I'm guessing Ms. Cross, Dr. Cross or Mr. Thacker can answer any other questions you have about this project as well.
Comments or questions from the board? Ms. McLean? Ms. McLean.
I had a question about the timeline, and also about will this interfere with the evening use of the facilities while it's under construction?
This might be a team answer.
The construction is slated to start at the end of school. We'll do some preemptive work the week before school's out in moving their layout yard and other materials out of the way so construction can get started. You can answer the next part.
As for TCAT night class, we're working with Kelly Cheney, who's the president of TCAT Knoxville. They have purchased on their own grant a gigantic semi that houses 20 booths for welding, and so we've requested for that to be on our campus. If we can't have that, then the students will be going to Anderson County, and they'll just team up with theirs. They're going through review, and they kind of wanted to have their semi out there. So it's one of those two. I'm hoping for A.
So when we visited Oak Ridge High School, we kind of got an explanation of what this is going to do when it's finished, and it will make a tremendous difference in a lot of things, from better quality of workspace to just the opportunity for students to do more than they're able to do now because of the space. So this is an exciting adventure, and as you said, we're fortunate to have that money and that grant to be able to do this. It's certainly a much-needed project. Anyone else? So please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the replacement of the sidewalk at Glenwood Elementary School. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the sidewalk replacement at Glenwood Elementary School by Skilled Services LLC in the amount of $87,650.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
Yeah, we might, Mr. Thacker, explain this one as well. This is a first phase of probably three phases of sidewalks that we have to do at Glenwood. So, Mr. Thacker.
So on the east end of Glenwood, the existing sidewalk has started to deteriorate and has become unstable for use. It currently does not meet ADA requirements, because as you know, Glenwood sits slightly above the parking lot area, which is their area for dismissal in the event of a fire. So this will provide ADA access from the east end exit to the parking lot level for the event of a fire evacuation. Phase two and three will add additional areas of egress that will connect to this section of sidewalk and replace another section of deteriorated sidewalk as we go forward.
Questions or comments from the board?
So this is this summer?
This is this summer.
Okay.
And this is the largest of the three phases.
Motion is replacement of the sidewalk at Glenwood Elementary. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, item N, is the replacement of the fire alarm at Jefferson Middle School. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the replacement of the fire alarm system at JMS by Commercial Building Systems in the amount of $187,241.59.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
As the memo states there, the current system is in need of upgrading due to increased maintenance issues and to bring the system up to the current life safety code requirements.
So I wasn't clear, are we replacing the entire alarm system? So the one that's there now is outdated, not functional, whatever, so the whole thing is being replaced, right?
It is currently functional, but we've had several issues with areas where the panels are starting to fail, and getting parts for those old panels are very difficult, if not impossible. We also don't have the proper coverage for current code, so this will bring all of our coverage up to current code. The process, we've already discussed it with State Fire Marshal Office, it'll take till roughly December to complete this level of installation, because we're having to add devices in every single classroom as opposed to a zoned system. And that process will be working so that we don't disturb classes. The old system has to stay active during that process, and then it will go down at the end of the other one being officially put into service.
Other questions? Motion is replacement of the fire alarm at Jefferson Middle School. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase and installation of the Blankenship Field Pavilion. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase and installation of the Blankenship Field Pavilion.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the memo, this is going to be possible by a donation from Chris Corin of $23,649.30 in order to put this pavilion up there at Blankenship.
Come answer questions.
That top corner, kind of where they're, they kind of congregate as you turn in on the right.
Are we supervising this construction?
This is actually a mobile unit that will be brought in and set in place, so there's not a construction piece to it, so it's a purchase and delivery in place.
So do we have to do any preparation?
That's all covered in the contract of the delivery system.
Will it stay there, or is it going to be taken down?
It'll be permanent there.
Motion on the floor is the purchase and installation of the Blankenship Field Pavilion, and our thanks to Mr. Corin for his donation to make this happen. So please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, item P is the purchase and installation of security window film. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the installation and purchase of security window film for district facilities in the amount of $302,520.70.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
Again, this proposal was accepted by Tennessee Window Film, and we'll install that securely tinted window film on district windows in the amount of that $302,000. As it says there, the work will be performed at night with project completion by the end of the fiscal year.
Come answer questions from the board. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase of CCTE furniture. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of CCTE furniture not to exceed $80,128.02 from the Home Depot Buying Cooperative.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This will be for the middle and high school CCTE courses, and it will include adjustable work style bench desks and adjustable drafting chairs for all students in middle school CCTE classrooms and the high school aviation flight classroom. If you're familiar with Mr. Livace's classroom, that's what it'll look like.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next is the purchase of 14 new line boards and mounts. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of 14 new line boards and mounts in the amount of $34,162 from Howard Technologies.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Dr. Hartman. Dr. Borchers.
We just have a few areas that we were going to put up a few more new line boards, and this is coming out and closing out part of that ESER 3.0 grant.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item S, the purchase of LU Interactive Playground for the Oak Ridge Preschool. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the purchase and installation of the LU Interactive Playground for the Oak Ridge Preschool in the amount of $33,898 from Howard Technologies.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Dr. Hartman, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
Again, this will come out of the ESER 3.0 grant, and I don't know about you guys, but I can't wait to see the preschoolers playing with this interactive playground like our elementary students are able to.
Once again, you're assuming that they're going to get to play with it first.
That's true.
Come answer questions. Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item T, purchase of emergency response system. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of an emergency response system from Alertis and Raptor in the amount of $389,828.10. Funding for this purchase will come from the COPS grant with matching funds from ORS.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
I'm going to ask Mr. Lay to speak to this, and I can't thank Mr. Lay and Doug and the IT department for all the work that's gone into this. It's been a journey, but we're very close. So, Mr. Lay, you want to just describe kind of what we're getting here?
Yes, sir. I think this has been over a two-year process, and we have met with multiple vendors. We have looked at the products that are out there, and what we are recommending is truly a state-of-the-art emergency response system. It will greatly reduce the time that it takes to report any emergency situation. The ORPD always tells us they will be on site within three minutes, and once again, if anyone sees anything concerning, each and every staff member will have the ability to respond to that and basically send out an alarm. And it's all automated. The appropriate people will be contacted immediately. It's going to be 911, it's going to be the superintendent, people in my positions, Mr. Thacker, administration. Teachers will be notified in three manners: a phone call, a text, an email. And once again, each staff member will wear a pennant, that basically they can initiate a Level 4 lockdown, which would be the most serious, where they can use their computers or their iPhones to do a medical emergency. And once again, the notifications will take place. So we are really excited about this and fortunate to have the grant. And once again, I've enjoyed working with the process, but Mr. Kofar, Jeremy, Steven, Travis, those are the gentlemen that had the expertise to make this happen, so we're really in a good place.
When do we, I was trying to think, maybe I shouldn't ask this question, but I'll ask part of it. When do we anticipate this being usable?
If everything has been represented correctly and goes as planned, we will train our principals the week prior to teachers returning. Teachers will be trained the week they return, and basically the day students, their first day in class, this system should be up and running.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item U, FY 24 Budget Transfer Number Two, a first reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY 24 Budget Transfer Number Two.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This transfer covers routine budget transfers and revisions, establishes a budget for insurance revenue and purchase of cooling towers, damage in the extreme cold weather during December 2022, and also established budgets for a couple of STEM grants.
Come answer questions. That comment reminded me of a question. Did we ever hear, or have we heard anything from our insurance in regard to help expenses on that?
Ms. Van Dyke?
Yes, we did, and we've already received some of the funding, and we're waiting for them to close out the claim, but they're paying for pretty much 100% of our damages less are deductible, of course.
Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Borchers, we've gone through quite a few items where we're spending money that's a grant money or ESER money. This may be something you want to get back later, but are we getting really close to the end of the ESER money?
We are, yeah, and Dr. Williams, our ESER guru, isn't able to be with us tonight, but yes, we're getting very close. We'll have no time, or no problem spending the remaining funds.
I didn't imagine we would, but we knew that one day when all of this started that it would end and there would be no more of it, which does present some problems as we look ahead to certain things that we've been able to do with this that we're going to have to figure out other ways.
That's right.
As we move forward. Okay, moving to items for information. Item A is the FY 24 Budget Concepts. Dr. Borchers.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Van Dyke, just a real high-level overview tonight. As we know, May 8 really starts the whole process, but anything that you'd like to share, Ms. Van Dyke, from the attached document?
Sure. I'm not going to pull up the entire document, but I can just give you some high-level overview. The document is available on our website for anybody who would like to look at it. As Dr. Borchers said, it's just kind of high-level. I mean, basically, what we all know is we have increasing enrollment, and we're estimating about 123 additional kids between October of last year, so October 22 to October 23. We are looking at giving a step raise to all of our eligible employees. And that's going to cost about $606,000 for all of our eligible staff. Just some other things, we already have our licensed retirement rates from the state. That is set by the state, that applies to all licensed staff throughout the entire state. It went down some, which was kind of good for the bottom line, if you will. About 82% of our staff is, I'm sorry, about 82% of our budget is related to staff salaries and benefits. We don't know about health insurance increases yet. The state hasn't told us that. We'll get that in June. And no increases for employee dental, vision, life insurance, benefits, or rates. We are not anticipating, on the revenue side, any additional funding from the city. Thankfully, we are looking at some increases in our funding from the state courtesy of the new TISA funding formula, which, as you had mentioned, Mr. Phil, are some of the positions we've been paying for with our ESER funds, we're going to be able to keep courtesy of that TISA funding, moving that over to our general fund. that TISA funding, moving that over to our general fund. And we don't have any major capital expenditures budgeted next year and very high overview. That's pretty much our budget process at this point.
Comment, comment or questions? And we certainly will be getting deeper into this over the next several weeks as we go over our budgetary items. So, again, and it says that our management, fiscal management, is in a good place because each year we're able to do things, we're not backtracking and saying, have to use that word, well, we've got a cut somewhere.
Right.
We're able, we hope that our fund stays healthy. We hope the support that we get both from the state and the city stays constant and grows.
Correct.
Because all of that is important as we try to put together the best educational programs that we possibly can.
And one thing I didn't mention, but I don't want my comments earlier to be misconstrued when I said that we were going to give a raise, I'm sorry, a step increase. We're doing that. That doesn't mean that we're, that's all we're doing. That's just what I can tell you how much that's going to cost right now.
Any questions at this point from the board? Okay, thank you. Next, we'll look at enrollment and attendance reports. Mr. Lay?
Yes, sir. First of all, I will call your attention to a form that, or a document I laid on your desk. And the question was asked from Dr. Krill. She is our student partner and we were talking about our truancy plan and she said, is it working? And I thought, man, what a profound question. You know, all this time and energy, is it actually working? So we reached out to our schools and as you can see, we have the tier one truant students and you see the number. And then if you basically go to the third column, you see the number that make it to tier three. And it's really a very low percentage that we're not successful in working with at tier one and tier two. And that just means that we are not sending students to juvenile court and we're not having parents charged with educational neglect. So, so once again, it appears that our plan is working well. That doesn't mean it can't get better, but this is encouraging. I just wanted to provide that for you. Next, I want to brag on our elementary schools. Our attendance looks the best it's looked in many attendance periods, so they really did a good job this past twenty days. And Mr. Phil, you're very kind. I will apologize to the group. We started to practice this past board meeting that we would hand out a trophy for the staff that basically had the best attendance in the school, that the students had the best attendance. And I remember telling myself, I'll need to remind the principals to bring the trophy. Well, Mr. Corrigan brought his trophy. I neglected to realize I needed to find someone to remind me to remind the principal and to make sure I had the data before me. With that said and done, Lyndon was clearly the winner amongst the students, so I will rectify that tomorrow and bring you your trophy, okay? And I apologize, that's not happening with our millions of viewers out there, okay? But once again, attendance was looking better. All right, do we have any questions?
We'll forgive you.
I appreciate that, sir, and you're kind, okay? Thank you.
It is obvious, and I think back when we really started and we needed to focusing on having our students in school. I mean, that's, if you're going to be successful, you got to be there and develop the habits of being there because when you leave, one of the worst habits you can have if you are going to try to keep a job is not showing up for work because you won't keep that job very long. So I think the efforts we've made, as you pointed out, are showing great dividends. And I think too, if the word gets out that if you're not there, there's going to be consequences. And once people start finding their consequences, they tend to tighten their belts a little bit and get to where they're supposed to be. So I know this is not something that just lays on your desk and you and your staff have spent a lot of time making this happen and we appreciate that. And the principals and the staff at each of our schools, they're part of this role as well and they, as obviously as we see, are making the effort to get the kids there, which is important.
Right, and I want to echo that. As I looked at the numbers on that one sheet, you can have the best written plan in the state, but unless you have the right people working the truancy and following the plan at the school level, everyone has just done a phenomenal job, you know? And it's still, when you research truancy, the number one cause of dropouts is still poor school attendance. So every time we can help a family and improve their attendance in attending school, then we have likely kept that child from becoming a statistic and being a dropout.
Any questions for Mr. Lay, from anyone? Next is the financial report. We've kind of already gotten that a little bit. Anything you need or would like to add at this point? Moving to items for discussion, any old or new business? Communications, a couple of items. May eighth is our first budget meeting and these meetings will begin at five, just like our board meeting. May fifteenth is the next budget meeting. And May twenty-second is a board meeting and adoption of the budget. And we will, as I said, be taking a look at the various line items within the budget, having discussion of those, and hopefully be ready to adopt the budget and send it on to the city on May the twenty-second. Would also mention that on May eighteenth is convocation at Oak Ridge High School and on May nineteenth is graduation at Blankenship Field, both of those starting at seven PM. And I don't think I've overlooked anything. I may have. Dr. Borchers, do you see anything on? Questions, any final questions or comments from the board? Lynn, thank you for keeping us moving forward. Dave and Scott, thank you back there for keeping us plugged into the men's that are watching tonight. And thank each of you for attending tonight. Have a great week and we stand adjourned.